Yeah.
Well, you know, what else you guys have called me and just say that?
I don't know why it's so hard to just give the address.
Sorry, what do you call them? No, my argument is it's city problems. And, I mean, it would've been so simple to just say, okay, I mean, who authorized it? It's Canada One authorized, it's just, uh, Main Street authorized, like Michael Roll.
No, that's not for our group, it's our group, our council.
So it'd been so easy to put it out. We could put it on, put it on the train. We gotta make an amendment, we gotta make an amendment anyway to experience. So, and, I just, you want transparency? The only thing is you, you were always going to be right for some reason. That's what I was trying to do.
Oh, no, that's such a good idea, such a son of a bitch. I don't care, you know, it's an adult, it's such bullshit.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Buchanan City Commission. It is Monday, April twenty-fourth at seven P M. Tonight, before we get started, oh, I'm sorry, we'd like to call the meeting to order, but then, before we get started, do you have a recognition? Whereas the white cane has become an international symbol identifying individuals who are blind or who have low vision and alerting Michigan drivers to observe caution for the safety of drivers and pedestrians alike. And whereas for decades, White Cane Week efforts have supported projects and organizations that benefit people who are blind or who have low vision and help provide examinations, eyeglasses, and white canes to those in need. And whereas during this week, we encourage people throughout Michigan to learn more about White Cane Week and to support projects and services that facilitate the independence of people who are blind or who have low vision. And whereas the Lions Club of Michigan is an organization dedicated to enhancing the quality of life for all people, particularly Michiganders who are blind or have low vision, and providing opportunities for these individuals to achieve greater autonomy. And whereas we recognize the dedicated volunteers of the Lions Club of Michigan for their continued commitment to community service. Now, therefore, I, Sean Dennison, Mayor of the City of Buchanan, do hereby proclaim April twenty-eighth to May seventh, twenty-twenty-three as White Cane Week in Buchanan. Okay. Will you join me for the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. You have roll call, please.
Dennison.
Here.
Whedon. Beyonce.
Yes.
Money.
President.
Swen.
Here.
You have a form.
Thank you, we need to make two slight amendments to the agenda.
So, I'll move to amend the agenda, to amend the agenda to excuse Mayor Pro Tem Whedon from the regular meeting of March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three, and April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, as well as add under consent agenda, approval of new signage at the common.
This is your support?
This is money I'll support.
Thank you. Do we have roll call, please?
Whedon, sorry, Beyonce.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swen.
Yes.
Dennison.
Yes.
Harris.
Thank you. You put that on the agenda.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, moving down to public comment. On agenda items only, if you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium and state your name for the minutes. Anyone wishing to make a public comment on an agenda item only? Okay. Moving down to the consent agenda.
Oh, we got, we got a public comment.
Oh, we do.
Got a public comment.
So, this is where I talk? Hi, I'm Stephanie De Schopper, I'm one of the Scarecrow Lady volunteers, and we're on the agenda, I don't know if we're supposed to speak or not, so, this is kinda just up in the air, but we wanna have a trivia night, that's why we're here, that's why we're on the agenda, and we hope you support us, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none, let's move down to the consent agenda. Someone like to make a motion to approve the amended consent agenda?
I'll so move.
I'll so.
This money I'll support.
Money's got it.
Do we have roll call, please?
Beyonce.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swen.
Yes.
Dennison.
Yes.
Motion, Harris.
Thank you. Okay. Sorry, I was, I have two different agendas in front of me.
I got Scarecrow Charities next.
Yeah, so Resolution twenty-twenty-three point oh-four dash thirteen. A resolution allowing Buchanan Scarecrow Charities to hold raffle events.
Stephanie just talked, they're just wanting to do a raffle.
She did, she did.
Stephanie, what was it, your raffle for?
Well, we, we don't know for sure, because we have to get this approved, that we're a five-oh-one C three, is that right? And, that, you know, that we're legit, and set it off to state and get our license and whatnot, so this is just like the the precursor, but we'd like to hold it in September or October, as long as it doesn't, uh, you know, affect any other charitable things around the town. And then maybe again in the spring, after we get making the scarecrows again.
Okay.
Great. Anybody have any questions?
Do we have to make two motions, or can we approve both dates?
No, they don't even need the date, they just need the resolution.
Well, I'll move to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-three spot zero-four dash one-three as presented, ladies.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Do we have roll call, please?
Money?
Yes.
Swen?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Beyonce.
Yep.
Motion, Harris.
Thank you. Okay, moving now to item B. Mary Lister, the interim executive director, Rhodey Rhodey Arts Center in Buchanan.
Well, my original intent was to ask for funds for, uh, to help replace the sidewalk at the Rhodey Rhodey Arts Center. But now, what I think I'm requesting is to, um, help, to ask for funding to help save the locust tree. Because what we had to do, um, we had to, um, change the scape of the sidewalk and make a curve in order to save lo, the locust tree. And that was an extra six thousand dollars on top of what we had already contracted for. But, we're, the art center is trying to help make the city a safer place and beautify it at the same time by replacing the sidewalk in front of our building. So, we've had a number of people fall, and the sidewalk is really needs, uh, a lot of repair. The tree friends came over and, um, we invited them over to look at, at the situation. And they convinced us to have a curved sidewalk to save the tree. And then we also decided to add an accessibility ramp from the tree lawn to the street. And, because there's, uh, we have a lot of traffic there and a lot of people coming in and out all the time. So, we wanted to be good neighbors and also, um, to the church next door the other way. And, so we wanted to, um, repair a large crack, which is in the sidewalk, they're close to, to their, the church. So, um, right now, we are in need of funds to help finance this twenty-one thousand dollar project. We've already raised over five thousand dollars and are working on more by two major fundraising events. We have a brisket and blues coming up on June third, which we hope everyone will attend. And, that is at the art center. And, um, our ongoing memorial and honor brick sidewalk sale, we're calling it. Um, which you can purchase bricks to put in our memorial walkways. Uh, that would help us with funding, so. Also, um, we hope that you would not avoid us when you hand out funds to other nonprofit organizations in the city, if you do. Um, we have kept the art center running and really thriving for the last fifteen years. And, we thank you many times over for giving us the building, which I don't know if people know the history of it, but, um, you gave us the building in two thousand and five and, um, with the option, uh, to take it back if we didn't make it successful. So, we did, and we, um, are now, well, been there since two thousand and five, so. We believe that we have created an, um, art center which makes the city proud, and we hope that you will show it with your support.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for?
Anybody have questions?
How much explicitly are you asking for?
Well, I, I would like five thousand dollars, but I don't have any idea what your budget is. I, I mean, um, because the five thousand is actually what we had to spend, five to six thousand extra over and above what it would have cost to put a straight sidewalk in, and no, no, uh, ramp. So, those two things we think are really adding a lot to make the city attractive and, you know, to save the tree, so.
So, Mary, when I looked at your quotes, I apologize, I didn't recognize the, the contractor that you provided, so I think the, when it's time for that to be considered, we could have multiple bids to look at, um, if that ends up happening, but, just some thought, I only saw one bid in the packet you supplied us, so.
Yeah, you know, I, I apologize because I was not at the art center when they, they already signed the contract. And, I was not there at the time, or I certainly would've kinda had a fit about what they got. But, um, they said that they checked a lot of local, um, people, and they just didn't have any success. They couldn't get anyone to bid. So, they finally went to this Ayers basement, which is in, I believe, based in Lansing. Uh, but they're coming out of Grand Rapids, so, um.
Well, we're, we're definitely gonna consider it, one of the things, um, it's budget season in City Hall, and they've all been working hard on the budget, and actually, one of the things that, um, the interim city manager, Mr. Lynch, is working on is a sidewalk fund, that we're trying to figure out, um, what we can do to help with sidewalks around town, so.
Wonderful.
It's definitely gonna be, uh, on the top of our list as we're working on the budgets, so.
Thank you for coming.
I got one more question.
Okay.
Since the tree's there and the sidewalk's already there, why can't the sidewalk be replaced right where it's at? Why does it have to go, what has to be?
Um, I think, Rich, you said?
Yeah, Rich.
Would it still, does it still grow?
I can answer that question.
Okay, good.
The sidewalk is heaving right now because of the tree.
Right.
If we put a sidewalk back down and tried to cut out the, the roots that are making that heave, that would kill the tree. So, we were trying to save the tree, it, it's a very nice tree, it, it's pretty old, and, uh, that was our solution.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay, moving down to item C, Randy Picard, presentation on bringing pickleball to Buchanan.
Hi, guys, thank you for giving us some time to present, uh, our case for why we feel we need pickleball in this great city. And, um, just, uh, a little bit on me, uh, a lot of you know me, some do not, but I've been a lifelong resident of this town. Uh, when I was a little guy, my father was a police officer here, and, so I grew up and I'm proud of this town. It's a nice place to live and, uh, uh, want to see it continue to flourish. Um, my wife and I just got back from the U S Open down in Florida in Naples. Uh, one of the largest pickleball tournaments, uh, in the nation down there. Uh, they represented every state and, uh, thirteen countries, I think it was, so. Uh, a lot of people, I think they have sixty-five courts down there or so, we're down a lot, nearly that many. But, uh, it's just, uh, uh, they, they tell us that, uh, pickleball is the fastest growing sport in the U S right now. Uh, it's overtaking tennis and, you know, uh, they're really not teaching it in high school, you know, like, uh, when I was in high school, they had tennis class and stuff like that, but, uh, this is growing much faster and encompasses many age levels, I mean, anywhere from twelve-year-olds all the way up to the president of our M P C, Michiana Pickleball Club, is seventy-six years old and, uh, you know, very active in playing, uh, very good community sport, and a lot of people willing to help others. So, um, there's a couple companies right here in southwest lower Michigan that are, are very instrumental in this sport, not only in this area, but nationwide and worldwide. Uh, Paddle Tech makes, uh, paddles, they sell equipment, they sell, uh, all kinds of apparel. Um, a young lady is, uh, is here, she's raised her hand. She's a representative from Paddle Tech, and she might have a few words to say. Uh, they would encourage, uh, you know, the, the, the extra business, uh, you know, if it opens up to get some courts, uh, what it might do for their business and the town of Buchanan. Um, Temper Sports, uh, owned by Doug and Diana Clark, uh, he sent me a note saying that, um, he'd be willing to offer a series of clinics and training and stuff like that. Uh, Tara just got back from doing some training over at, uh, Red Duck Fest. I, I don't believe they charge anything for their services, um, you know, so it's something that we're, we're willing to help them learn the sport and, uh, grow the sport and, uh, you know, all ages, I mean, we play with our grand kids, it's just a lot of fun and, and stuff like that. The court size is roughly forty-four long, twenty wide, so roughly they're about half the size of a tennis court, uh, so it don't take up nearly the, the space. One thing that you will, uh, encounter if you've ever been around the sport, you can walk outside and instantly hear the, the dinking noise, uh, because you play with, uh, what we know as like a little whippa ball and an oversized, uh, ping pong paddle. You know, so you, you do get a little bit of noise from that, uh, so, if this got approved, we'd wanna consider a place that wouldn't upset any neighbor, so to speak. So that'd be one consideration that we'd wanna keep in mind. Um, there are several certified instructors within the Michiana area that, uh, you know, people hire on a daily basis to, to instruct. Uh, they'd be willing to come here and do the same thing. Um, Michiana Pickleball Club, I mentioned them, they have between four and five hundred members. And, uh, they would also be willing to help, they have something we call a mixer, and what it does is introduce the community to the sport, so if you've never heard of the sport, you could come and watch it be played. Uh, we often offer, like, pizza and things of that nature, uh, just to get the community out and let them see what the sport is. Uh, Paddle Tech is very, very generous, a lot of times, uh, they'll give ten, fifteen paddles, um, you know, to beginners, just so they get used to it. And then, as a demo, you know, then if you find one you really like, then you can go purchase one, Temper has a similar, uh, program out there as well. Um, uh, I do understand that, uh, Diana Clark has been in contact with the Buchanan Area Rec Board and, um, has made some comments and mentioned how good it would be for their business and just Buchanan in general. So, I myself would be willing to help in any way. You know, if there's a special committee or s, uh, board or whatever, um, I have a, a little bit of time that I would, uh, donate, uh, in that respect. Um, there are several people here, I won't mention all their names, but, uh, Scott and Beth are here, the four of us, they're all pickleball players. Great people, uh, we also, um, is, Tara has a, a second job where she works at, um, yep, and, uh, you know, so oftentimes when we get on plan, we'll go visit these establishments and, you know, and enjoy dinner and, and things of that nature. So, it also helps some of the local businesses in that respect. Um, I sent all you guys, um, you know, some, the numbers of people that, uh, you know, play, and, you know, anywhere from, you know, Saint Joe area has four hundred and thirty-five players, uh, New Buffalo two ninety-seven, and there's an app out there called, uh, Team Reach. And all you do is enter like a zip code, that's what Red Bud does. And, uh, you know, you can link to other players that wanna play on given days, and, uh, you know, so they'll show up. So we have a, a Team Reach for Buchanan, you know, if this got established and, you know, people could meet there and play, and, uh, it's, it's a free app and just a good way to connect with other players. And I think that's about all I have. Um, I also sent you, uh, the other areas in Michiana. Um, Niles, um, they have Plum Park, uh, they just, uh, last year got ten, uh, dedicated line, line of courts. A lot of us are familiar with Fireman's Park over Niles, uh, they completely resurfaced that. Um, Six Brandon Courts over there, very, very nice. Marion Springs has twelve courts, Saint Joe has eight, New Buffalo has eight. Uh, Klowma has six courts, and then South Bend, Michiana, I think there's eight to ten locations, and at each location they have a minimum of four courts. Some as many as ten courts, so, um, just a, a sport that's up and coming, love to see it here, and if there's anything I can do personally to help, uh, bring it here, I would be happy to do that.
Well, thank you for coming, Mr. Picard, um, I'm curious, so, in your opinion, what, how many courts do you think a city of our size should start with?
I think, um, you know, there's some grand plans that, you know, I'd love to see, but, you know, at a minimum, uh, up in, um, Saint, not Saint Joe, what, Lakeshore, uh, Lincoln Township, they had four, and they just had a, a meeting, and they increased it to two, uh, to, two more additional courts. And, I think of, uh, Buchanan with its size and, uh, keep in mind, we would have people from Three Oaks and, you know, New Buffalo and Marion Springs. But if we had four courts, I think, uh, for starters, I think, uh, you know, s, you know, the, the footage of that takes kinda makes sense. Um, uh, if you do it in twos, it makes sense because it, you know, how it multiplies out. Um, but I think four would be good, I, I, I would love to see lights, but that's, that's a whole nother picture, and maybe a pay-as-you-go, you know, the lights aren't on all the time, it's like a curtain card in, and you can pay for an hour of lights or something like that.
We could do that with lots of things.
But yeah, we, uh, hey, you know, we, we don't wanna, you know, the big picture would be fantastic, but if we, we got started with some courts and then, uh, down the road, we were able to add some lights and, and I'm sure, um, you know, if we put this thing in the right area and, you know, if someone wanted to go play at ten o'clock at night, it wouldn't bother anybody, and like, you know, like I said, they did a pay-as-you-go kinda thing, no sense to burn the lights, uh, when no one's there, so, uh, something along those lines.
Have you got a location that you looked at, Randy, or?
Well, um, some time ago, uh, up near Stark School, they had two tennis courts there. And, um, I don't think that's being utilized, the courts are gone, they've been removed.
Right.
But if we could put those back in that general area, there's ample parking across the street. Um, and, you know, that's just one spot, uh, I've heard some others, you know, talk about down near the dog park. Uh, my concern there gets a little wet down there at times, but, um, uh, I often thought Stark School would be, uh, perfect, there's, you know, previously tennis courts there anyway. And, um, easy to get to, plenty of parking.
That's all the baseball association now though, isn't it? I think they've pretty much encompassed all of it.
I, I'm not sure.
Have you talked to Jen Tabor at all?
About lining the, uh, school tennis courts? Um, there's what, four courts there, that would make eight pickleball. That'd be one of the achievements. And that way you can use temporary nets, so you can still play tennis, you can still play pickleball. That's what, that's what Marion Springs does.
That's the schools proper.
Yeah, that would be my next question. I'm all for this kinda stuff, I mean, when they approached us about the golf, you know, the, the frisbee golf. But, the city, even though we're a city, we don't have the ma, money, Randy, and the ideas are fantastic. But if we don't have the people that are gonna come in and generate the income and generate the manpower, we can't do it as a city, we cannot do it. And I mean, I would love to see it, I would love for you to talk to Jen Tabor, I would love for you to talk to the school.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and if you want Jen's number, I can give it to you.
Okay.
Cause I don't know that much about Stark School, y'all would know if there's a gym in Stark School. You know, I think she told me that the ceilings are only fourteen foot high in there.
This is outdoor course.
Yeah, but this would be indoor.
We want outdoor.
So Randy, I see that you're already pursuing a meeting in, in, looks like June with Barb, and that's, that really is the right channel to focus these requests through. Um, my suggestion would be, come to that meeting with your funding strategy, you know, your location options, how you're gonna get from A to B, basically your business plan for that. Um, cause they've got a set of priorities already, that, and a five-year plan that's already been established. So, understanding how they're gonna get your plan within that five-year plan, which they're constantly updating on an annual basis. Um, they need to understand the funding mechanisms, and when you have a plan, you can get with a guy like Rich, who, he's out of town this week, but, um, you need those strategies and funding plans and to go after grant money. Uh, and a lot of times, that's how requests like this get approved, so, those are, you're, we appreciate you coming tonight, but, running through Barb is the group that we designate to be in charge of that, and they really guide the, right, guide our focus to make sure we're investing for the greater good.
Sure. I know, uh, I was, uh, deeply involved with the resurfacing of the firemen's, and there was a young lady, Jill, I forget her last name, but she was over there, and she helped us with, uh, funding. Um, and the courts out near Plum Park. I don't know how they're appropriated this way, but a lot of the money, if not all the money, was called COVID money.
Right.
And, um, I don't, that seems to be an endless stream of money, and I don't know, uh, I don't know if, you know.
It's not anymore.
Okay.
But know that this has been a subject for probably two years now. I used to sit on the Barb, um, when they did the presentation for the pickleball company over here in Randy's building. Um, and then, I know that we, as a, as a group, the Barb Committee walked around and looked at the different parks and Um, and then I know that we, as a, as a group, the Barb committee walked around and looked at the different parks and we were trying to eyeball where we could put them and where it made the most sense for parking and all, all that. And we've had several people from the community who, um, have had fundraisers and may have some money that they can put towards a pickleball facility or courts, um, if you will, so I know there's interest and I think it'll keep gaining momentum if we keep pushing this story, so.
Okay.
Uh, thanks again for coming and, uh, appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you.
Any of the group care to share anything else or we table it for now?
I'll say something, I do agree with Randy, so I mean, Paltech.
If you could come up here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't do this often.
Hello. So I do agree with Randy, so I've been with Paltech for a little over eight years and since COVID, our sales have just skyrocketed. So every single day we have multiple customers that come in, they buy paddles, they're new to the sport, they're old to the sport. And the question we always get is, well, where can we play? And unfortunately, there's not a ton of places we can say, we have a decent amount, but not a ton close in the area. So I would also love, like everyone else, to have pickleball courts in Buchanan. Um, I think it would be great, um, I do think sales here would skyrocket as well. Like Randy said, I also work at Lehman's, Elite and Mini Straits. Um, so lots of times after Pickleball League that they have, I think on Tuesday nights, we have people that come to Lehman's to like grab a drink, grab a beer, and I'm sure go to River Saint Joe and Marcoys. So I do think having the courts would also bring people in to eat and drink and do all the extra activities we have here.
So you, do you currently play at the fitness center?
Yeah.
Yeah, there are three indoor courts there. And, uh, typically when it gets, starts getting a little bit nicer outside, um, you know, people like to gravitate outdoors. Um, you know, so that's, you know, now we're traveling to South Bend or Niles, you know, some off to Barien. And, um, you know, we would just love to see something here if at all possible.
Yeah.
Have you talked to her? Have they talked about putting one outside?
I know a while ago, they talked about doing outdoor courts, I'm not sure, like at Red Bud, I'm not sure where that stands today. But I know when they first opened, they mentioned it and I don't know if they got a freeze on it or what, but.
So you have no need for another inside court?
I would love to have one.
I mean, I, I, you know.
We're just starting.
I mean, if you're going to try to do this on your own, you might want to start, I mean, you have to pay the dues to play in the building over there.
Correct, yes.
So I mean, it might be worth a conversation to talk to the school or talk to Jen Tabor and see what you guys can work out so that you can build that, you know, when you don't have anything, you got to start from zero. That's all I'm trying to say.
Right.
And the city is really, we would love to, I would love to, I would love to have that frisbee. First thing I said is dope and frisbee goes along, pickleball's pretty close. And I mean, nobody likes to say it, but we're the marijuana capital of Southwest Michigan.
Yes.
And we're not going to hold on to that title very long, it'd be nice, it's something to go along with it.
Right.
There you go.
But there's no money, folks. So, I mean, anything that you can come up with as far as an initiative, we're open to it. I mean, the property, we've got the property. You know, so if you come to us with prop, with, on a plan to do something, we can just say, well, you could allocate this half acre to you. We can do it. So, I mean, it's just like the art center. We gave the building to the art center. But we don't have the money to help, even though we'd like to.
Sure.
So, I mean, I just want to make that very clear to you, I'd love to see it, I really would love to see it. So.
Being a person like myself though, how, how would I go and look for funding? I'll just use the COVID money as an example, how would I go out and look for that type of money?
Um, we have a grant writer here in, in, in the audience, I think he works with Richard pretty close.
Right.
And if you go on Google, and how many alumni do you have to the city of Buchanan? I mean, if you got five dollars a piece from him, you know, just by sending out emails. I mean, you just start, Mary, Mary's very good at fundraising. Um, but we really need to go on a grander scale, you got marijuana people in here that haven't been tapped.
Is Jerry Flinner a pickleball player? Cause he's really going to raise the money.
Jerry, we can make you a good pickleball player.
Scott's already trying.
All right, yes.
Trying to free paddle.
I have, I had a very avid cousin that played all the time, so.
I, I think you're on the right track, I mean, we need to keep building the interest, I, I would go to the Barb meeting. Um, and we can develop a plan for where to put them and how to fund them.
Okay.
Um, quick question, I want to have to get up close, is there a list of buildings that the city would have available to look at?
I think you can work with Rich Murphy on that.
The building, a list of buildings?
Yeah.
A list of properties? Sure, we can give you a list of parks.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to reports by departments, committees and boards, starting with Director of Public Services, Mr. Mike Baker.
Good evening, okay, I, we have, I called Daniel Burns today to talk things over, we haven't had a meeting in a couple of weeks. Um, and we were supposed to have one on Wednesday morning this week. We have the building builders risk insurance taken care of, so that's a go. We are working, I'm working on the FFNEs, trying to find stuff that I can buy off the list a little cheaper than, um, I've been involved in a couple of auctions for forklifts, um, that are going hopefully a lot cheaper. Um, I have a local, oh, forklift that I'm kind of working with a guy right now. Um, it's an older machine, but it's only has two thousand hours on it, so we're very interested in that. I've already gone and looked at it, it needs some stuff so I can get it started and make sure that it goes. Um, AEP has been contacted about the demo of the electric lines going to the old shop. So we can get that moved and placed in the right spots, so we can take off from there and go to the new building. Um, the building has been ordered. Uh, the, we selected a bunch of finishes for the outside, inside. All of that good stuff, what a whirlwind that is, I didn't know I was an interior designer, neither did Sean. So, um, we do have a meeting on Wednesday, as I already mentioned. Um, and the soil analysis is getting ready to kick off for the, the state to do for the contaminated soils. So we can see where we have to go with that. Um, hopefully they'll be here this week or possibly next to do those soil borings, so we can move on with that project and get everything rolling. Um, yeah, that's what I have on the building. As far as that goes, hopefully I'll know more on Wednesday.
While you're standing there.
Yes. Your auger.
Yes, the auger.
We called CAT, you know, cause we bought this auger because it was the right thing for our machine and it was going to go right on the machine and work, right?
Right.
Believe me, any tool that's ready to string me up in a tree, I'm pretty sure.
There, there's several that are, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Um, it's, we hooked it up, it only ran in reverse. I switched the lines around, it only ran in reverse. It didn't have enough power to dig in a pile of sand. So I called CAT, they said, oh, there's a valve you got to put in there to be five grand. Parts, labor, all the stuff to fix it. So, well, I, I think we talked about that here at a commission meeting. Um, I kind of put them off, I talked to them, I, can I get these parts anywhere else? You can't, it's not, so we met CAT over here. We met with Southwestern Supply, Randy from Southwestern Supply. Came in, explained what they needed to do, what they were planning on doing. Apparently we have to valve something off, change the way the hoses run to the back and put a pin in so it won't extend while we're running the, the machine. Um, they, Randy says, I can get all that stuff, I'm literally waiting on one part. Randy was in last week, he brought me all the other parts, I need one more part. And he said, if I have to order this from CAT, it'll be three times what you paid for all the rest of it. And I don't even know what I paid for the rest of it, cause he hasn't brought me a bill yet. But I'm assuming that's way under the two thousand dollar mark.
This just makes me so aggravated, I mean, the thing about it is, is we've already planted, how many trees, Richard, forty of the hundred that you wanted to plant?
Oh, no, we, we planted, well, in the last year, we planted close to a hundred.
How much money will they give us back for the auger?
I have no idea.
I mean, it's been a, we've had the auger for over a year.
Yep, well, the first hurdle was just getting the, the, the thing on the ground in the first place.
Well.
Then they delivered the motor and not the auger.
What equipment are you using?
It's on the backhoe, the CAT backhoe, which is why we ordered a CAT.
So if you have to move hoses and stuff around, is it going to affect the way the backhoe works for other things?
No, it's not going to affect the way that the backhoe works.
Yes, it will, yes, it will.
Dan's a mechanic, so ask Dan.
That's right, I am, I've worked around hydraulics probably a little more than you. And you start, you start moving lines around, you start moving lines around.
So anyways. The way that it has to be diverted and worked, it will not affect anything that we're doing. Um, there's a pin we had to put in, take out, so it won't extend while it's working.
But the, the auger itself is like thirty-five, four grand, something like that.
Something like that, I can't remember.
Have we spent that much more on?
No, absolutely not, I have not, no, nope.
He doesn't.
Can we get it done by, by the end of May? Or can we, if it's not done by the end of May, can we look into selling that thing back to whoever we got it from and
Yeah.
find something that we can actually use?
Yep, I will look into that.
I mean, and I, and I appreciate you digging all the holes for the trees that we did this past weekend. Um, but, uh, you know, tho- those holes really aren't ideal for, for planted trees.
No, they're not, they're cumbersome, they're square holes, yeah, round.
Around pegging a square hole, yeah.
Right.
So, yeah, I, I promised them that I would say something and, I, you know, hopefully we can get it working.
I'm working diligently, I promise you that, I have not let it go since we've gotten it. It's just a matter of parts, supply and demand type of thing and getting people here to help me figure out. I, I don't feel like we should send it to CAT and have it done when they're, they're going to charge me an arm and a leg. It's going to cost me a thousand dollars just to have the machine sent there.
Yeah.
That I can't haul myself, so.
Okay, I want to say some more, because, you know, you want to be a smart aleck about me being a mechanic. I've worked just about a mile around as much high pressure, you know. He's not even going to, he's not even going to be decent, he's going to ignore me, he's going to walk away. He can show me some respect. You're going to show me some respect. Do you hear me?
You betcha.
And I will be as cordial as I possibly can. The rest of these guys, you're the man in the, in the, you're the man with the plan. We spent five thousand dollars for a piece of equipment we could not use. You, it was up to you to ask the questions before you bought it and presented it to us. It's not up, but, let me finish, please. It's not up to us to make the decisions. And whether I'm, whether I'm a mechanic or not, I got a pretty good firsthand knowledge how it works. You start moving high pressure hoses around, you're going to wind up with leaks, Mike. You can guarantee that, you can shake your head no, but you deal, is it five thousand pounds of pressure in your hydraulics? No, my machinery was, sir. So you start moving it around, but that's all I wanted to say. I wanted to make it perfectly public that it's been a year debacle and more money pissed away, for lack of any other way of putting it.
So we, we were researching this equipment, there's a bunch of them on the market, I presented all of them to you. We went to CAT, said, is this going to work, fit on the machine, work on the machine? This was dead, designed for this machine, is what we were told, correct? Yep, it will hook right on your machine and work, that's exactly what I was told from CAT. I am not a mechanic, I do not know that it wouldn't work when I got the machine. So now I'm going to make it work on my machine.
You want me to tell you what I do?
Thanks.
Yeah, you heard nothing, thanks, Mike.
Let's move on to the Main Street Manager, Assistant Community Development Director, Ms. Ashley Riehl.
Hello, I'm Ashley, you guys got, uh, screenshots of the common schedule for the summer and I hope you're impressed with how busy it is because I am, uh, we have Thursday concerts, Friday concerts, Saturday concerts. We have public and private events and it's going to be a great summer. I think I also sent you guys, uh, the lineup for the summer concerts, which is going to be printed, published, news, press releases this week, so we're super excited, we got that finalized, I think, a week or two ago, so, yeah, we're ready to go. I didn't know if you had any questions about this schedule or anything you wanted to look in in more depth, but if you are okay with it, then we can just, uh, approve it and move forward with our warm summer plans.
So I'll move to approve the twenty twenty-three common schedule as presented.
Thank you, is there support?
Oh, support, it's money.
Thank you, have a roll call, please.
Yes.
Denison?
Yes.
Janowski?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
yours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
Okay, moving down to new business, item A, budget amendment. Consider approving the budget amendments as presented by the Finance Committee.
Uh, I'll give a quick update on that, if you don't mind, so, or Tim could probably give a better one, but
No, go ahead.
in a, in a nutshell, the, Deb and Tim and Courtney and Ben, hard at work trying to clean up some of the books in advance of, uh, our fiscal year end, at the end of June. Um, with that comes, uh, the realization of we're not going to take in as much money as we originally hoped, so, uh, the first step was figure out what our real number was going to be, so that team cut north of a million dollars outside of, uh, I'm sorry, out of our projected revenues as they're dwindling down the, um, the expense side of that right now. That part hasn't been approached to us for, or approved to us for amendments on that side yet. So the budget amendments that are in the agenda tonight are approximately a million dollars worth of revenue reduction that was anticipated. Anything you want to add to that?
No, uh, we're hoping to do better on the expense side.
Yes.
When we, so we're going on that, so.
I did want to add something to that, I've been checking quite a bit on the marijuana. New Buffalo has just opened, opened it up. You're probably going to see ten, fifteen dispensaries up and down Red Arrow Highway, which is going to dilute your numbers substantially. And the marijuana companies are going to try to get on Thirty-One South, a mile north of the state border. And if they open that up, you're going to see that much more dilution on the marijuana funding. So, I just wanted to put that out there.
All right. Someone like to make a moment, you have something, Tim?
No, that's it.
All right, so I'll move to approve the budget amendments as presented by the Finance Committee.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Have a roll call, please?
Denison?
Yes.
Janowski?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Swan?
Yes.
One, your turn.
Thank you. Okay, moving down to Communications.
Oh, hi, that's me. Sorry, I'm just heading away. Uh, just so you guys know, if you haven't heard of the city of Buchanan, we are having a special election on May second. Uh, that is not this Tuesday, but next Tuesday, polls are open, seven AM to eight PM. Mr. Hugh over there will be working right here in Precinct One, if you want to come say hi, hi to him. Otherwise, you can get ACT ballot all this week, you can come and see me, just need your ID, we'll get you taken care of. I will also be here on Saturday from seven AM to three PM, in case anybody needs to register to vote or they want to do an ACT that day, um, let me know, I will not be taking any water bills that day, so please don't hand me those. But anything election related, I'll be here, that's it.
Thank you, do you have any questions for? Okay, let's move on to public comment on non-agenda items. If you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium, state your name for the minutes.
Time's up.
Norma Ferris, Memorial Day is coming and the cemetery needs help, big time. What can you tell me, will you help us?
What do you need?
What, what, explain what you need.
We need employees.
And volunteers.
Well, that's going to be Mr. Baker back there in the back, and what he usually does every year is any extra employees that he has, uh, he usually runs out there and they do a lot of weed eating and stuff. And then they also have part-time help that they've been looking at, so, uh.
I missed a question.
She's wondering if there's more cemetery help, cemetery.
If there's any.
I had two gentlemen start today, Moen. Um, the guys have been busy weed eating and trying to keep up with the spring cleanups and parks and everything else, so we are, we've had watermelon breaks, I got one going right now.
That's what I'm talking about, the cemetery needs employees. Mike cannot take all care, all of this. He doesn't have the employees for his job.
Okay, thank you, Norma.
But you haven't told me you'll do anything.
Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
I'm Brian Murphy with the Buchanan Tree Friends.
I'm Richard Martin with Buchanan Tree Friends, nine twenty Chippewa.
Uh, fourteen eighty-nine East Glean Buchanan Road in the township. Uh, Saturday was Earth Day. Saturday was Earth Day. Um, Earth Day was established in nineteen seventy. Uh, on that day, there were two million people protesting across the United States in favor of our earth. It was, decided that it was the largest human protest in history. Pro- Earth Day is now an official day on the calendar. This Earth Day, we planted some trees.
We planted twenty-nine trees in the north neighborhood. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for helping us out. Um, we had lots of volunteers, there were some people from Red Bud Roots, uh, who came. I don't know about any of the other marijuana facilities, but, uh, we, we had a number of volunteers, and it worked out real well. We, we did a lot of planning, P-L-A-N-I-N-G, is that right? Oh, no.
Two N's.
N-N. Not planning.
Niles High School.
I meant to refer to, as, instead of planting. But, but anyway, um, Mike Baker's crew helped us tremendously. They unloaded the trucks from, or unloaded the trees from the truck, they took the trees to all the holes, and they dug the holes for us. It was wonderful.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike, very much.
We're grateful to you, Mayor, for coming and, and assisting us, saying some nice words. And we're grateful to the Michigan Gateway Community Foundation, which funded this planting. Um, I also wanna announce that this Friday is Arbor Day. Arbor Day was started in eighteen seventy-two. Um, but since the middle school is closed on Thursday, we're gonna recognize it, on Friday, we're gonna recognize it here in Buchanan on Thursday. The mayor's gonna come, Ms. Buchanan and her court are gonna be there. We're gonna give saplings to a hundred kids. And, um, so, it was started in Nebraska, and on that day in Nebraska, they planted a million trees. So now Arbor Day is, Arbor Day, it's part of our being a tree city USA, we have the flag up here. Um, I know that, uh, that was started in nineteen seventy-six as an offshoot of Earth Day. I know that Ann Toode has been in communication with you, because with our, with the clerk, because there's certain criteria that we need to meet every year. One of the criteria is that the mayor's gonna read a proclamation on Thursday at the middle school. Also, we're gonna be on the agenda next meeting in two weeks. Um, the Tree Friends in October passed a resolution for your, to give to you. You will get that, obviously, in advance of the meeting, but I'd like to, I, I will read it to you. It was approved under Richard's leadership when he was chair, I'm the chair now, so I will bring that. Um, and I will bring you an update on our planning and our, uh, our budgets for how we're going to address the tree needs of the city for next year, and then, uh, in anticipation of the next five, ten years. Because remember, what's the best, best day to plant a tree?
Today.
Twenty years ago, or today, okay?
Well, thank you for all you're doing, and just, it really is a lot of fun. I mean, I, I had fun Saturday. And you don't, you don't have to be a young buck, look at these guys. Now, really, and it's not, it's not hard work, I mean, if you get tired, you take a break, there's, there's eight people planting one tree, so, you know, you can.
Yeah, we had high school, we had two kids from the high school that are on the Michigan Gateway Youth Board. Um, so, we had everybody from age fourteen, fifteen.
We had one little one, we had one real little one.
So it's fun, and, uh, you know, it's, it's a great community activity.
It is fun. I would encourage people, if you, if you see that they need volunteers, I would encourage you to help, it's, it's pretty rewarding and fun.
Our conversation in two weeks will be, uh, more interesting about, really, the implications of the, the, uh, the cer- the tree survey that we had.
Right.
And the implications that that has on the future of that piece of our infrastructure. And really, on, on Mike's work, and on all of our volunteer work, but also, you know, so, that'll be an interesting conversation.
Great. You tell everybody what you planted, what kind?
All kinds.
There are about a dozen different species.
Really?
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
Oh, hardwood?
We don't want them all to be the same species, 'cause if a blight came through, it might hurt everything else.
All right, good to know.
Plus, we, we, Richard walked through the north neighborhood with the, some members of an ad hoc committee that is up there, Jeanne Harris leads that. Uh, Richard walked through the neighborhood, looked at sites, talked about species, we accommodated their requests.
Great.
It was a, a wonderful community building event.
And then we actually, we even had one person who, we were just getting ready to put the tree in the hole, and it was right outside of her leaving her window, and we found out she was allergic to dogwoods, so we, we swapped trees.
We swapped trees, yeah, which didn't make Annie happy, 'cause she already had the teatag.
But we got it done.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
William Haas, uh, on native Michigan remedies, I too like planting trees. I just wanted to come back to you guys, and I realize that New Buffalo is putting in more marijuana, but that doesn't stop me from wanting my retail here in Buchanan. I'd still love to have my opportunity. There's still some things that I brought up in the past that, uh, I would like for the council to consider. I still have a piece of property that I can utilize in the industrial part. It would bring more revenue to you guys, and I have the means to do this, you know? I've been licensed for two and a half years, running and operating the grow. My processing lab should be operational by June first, and the last piece to our puzzle is the retail. And I'd still like to come home to Buchanan and do what I started here. So, I'd like for you guys to take that into consideration and see what we can do about that. Thank you.
Just as a side note to your comments, um. May?
Eighteen, sorry, eighteen.
It's May eighteenth? We're gonna be having an open house, um, here, um, with marijuana growers and retailers, um, the public, hopefully, um, just to talk about the state of the cannabis industry in Michigan. So, um, I think it could be pretty interesting, actually, but I would invite you to come.
It will be very interesting, 'cause there's gonna be a lot of different points of views.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of people out there that are small guys and big guys that are just failing miserably.
Right.
In my company, we'd never, we were never after the capital, I, I did this for a reason. And I'm still in this, I'm playing in the NFL at cannabis, and we're making about that much headway every month. But I own my stuff, and I'm still here, and I plan on being here till the end. So, I hope you guys give me the opportunity. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
My name is Deanna Benock, and I just went to a meeting to the union, or legion. And they said that you can't, the city said, you can't throw candy this year. Is that true?
Deanna.
Now, they told us at our meeting we just went to.
No.
And they said you're gonna have to talk to the city, Larry.
That is not true, that was something that was made by the commander of the American Legion from last year. I tried to explain that to certain individuals, that is wrong. Uh, the American Legion will not, because there was an incident that happened with one of our people from the American Legion last year, pigeon candy, so, no.
What's pigeon candy?
Throwing the candy off the trailer. So the city has nothing to do with that. It was, uh, it was the American Legion is not doing it.
About it, 'cause she told us the cities, it was the cities' choice that you don't throw candy. I mean, but my government done that for years, that's what the kids look for.
I agree.
But I didn't know, okay.
It came, that came from the American Legion.
Comes from the American Legion, and it's just the American Legion, quote, proper, that will not be throwing candy, so. Yeah, so, well, then, have them come talk to me, or Marvin, please.
There will still be candy at the parade. And goggles. Apparently someone got hit in the eye last year with a piece of candy, so, that was why Marv decided not to throw candy from any of the, from any of the legions' floats or vehicles. But everyone else is still more than welcome to very carefully throw candy. Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
I, I have one phone call.
True.
I was originally here to support all the, um, pickleball people, and I am here for that. But in honor of Arbor Day, oh, I'm sorry, my name, I've never been to your meetings before. My name is Beth Dunton. I don't live in Glean, I mean, in Buchanan, I live in Glean Township, but I'm here today. Um, so, in honor of Arbor Day and Earth Day, um, I would, I'm curious what the township does about people who want to not mow their lawns. And wanna have a more natural setting, a more natural situation growing in their lawn, you know, in their yards. Is there a resolu- or, you know, what do you do about that, if somebody doesn't wanna do that anymore?
We, we do have ordinances about how tall your grass can be.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Have you ever considered doing something different?
Well, but we did, there are a couple different properties that have wild areas.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sure that, we have an enforcement issue, so, um, I'm not sure what gets done with those. But, I know there are a few, I've walked by them, as a guard.
Are they just being ignored, are they just being ignored, the properties there, just deciding not to do anything about it?
There's lots of tall grass.
I can't speak for.
Unmowed grass.
Yeah, there's lots of tall grass tickets handed out, and, you know, I mean, it'd be nice. I mean, you'd have to really go into details, because the thing about it is, is it's great, if you wanted to put a flower bed in. There is an ordinance that you can do things other than grass in the tree lawn. That ordinance was passed six or seven years ago.
Mm-hmm.
So that spot in between the road and the sidewalk.
Yep.
You can turn that, but you can't go only so high.
Uh-huh.
So you can turn it into a rock garden, or, you know, you can do things with it.
Okay.
I mean, I agree with you, uh, less water.
Yeah, yeah, less gas, less diesel, less whatever.
If you don't water it, it gets pretty hardy, you don't have water very much, so.
Exactly. And there is an initiative, um, called No Mo May, though I will admit that if I let my lawn, I mean, I have let certain parts of my lawn go, you know, and it's fine, it doesn't get very high. But if, if I didn't mow certain parts of it, I probably wouldn't be able to get through it. But, there is an initiative called No Mo May, so if anybody's interested in that, I can talk to them about that. And it's just, uh, you know, just something to think about, something that's a little bit different to think about than a lawn.
Thank you. Anyone else have any public comments? Okay, see you in a minute, last chance. All right, let's go to executive comments, city manager comments.
Okay, uh, I'll be brief. I'd just like to commend Mike Baker and his public works group. They have been dealing with some pretty adverse conditions in the wild world of, uh, pressurized watermen. And he is a man of many hats, he's got a great crew. He's, uh, the director, crisis manager, and emergency planner, all rolled into one. He's got some great folks that work for him, and I'm proud to be a small part of that team, and I'm a very small part of that. Uh, we have, have been working on the budget, the finances, the DPW building construction, and we've got a internal committee here on, working on Thrill on the Hill, hoping, hoping to make it a beneficial event with full accounting of all revenue and expenses. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's do country comments, Chris Swann.
I wanna start by, uh, giving my condolences to the family of Lloyd Miller, uh, who passed away. I think it was on the nineteenth, I read the obituary today, so, great man, served this community in, in many, many capacities. Consummate volunteer, um, yeah, true Buchanan buck through and through, and, and, uh, great man. So, thoughts with his family right now. Uh, huge thank you to the Tree Friends for all the work they put in this past weekend, I'm sorry I wasn't able to attend, I was at a soccer game this week. But, the, the last time, uh, we did the major planning, my kids and I had a great time, and, uh, as you guys mentioned, it's a great show of community support, when everybody gets, literally gets their hands dirty for that one, so, uh, thank you. And it's a, it's a true mission to, to kinda plan that out when knowing it's gonna be twenty-plus years before we really see the, the fruits of the labor and what it does for this community. So, just thank you for everyone for that effort there. And then, big thank you to the Buchanan Chamber for our Chili Walk event that took place. Lots of people involved in that, from more than just the Chamber, the police, uh, DPM events, Red Bud Roots, all the different volunteers and supporters of that event, so, we had downtown hustling, bustling, uh, on that day, and I didn't see any accidents, it seemed well, well-attended, I, I know we sold well over five hundred spoons. This year, our benefactor is the Tree Friends for a portion of that money, so, um, yeah. It was a great community event, and hopefully we have the same success next year. That's all I have.
Thank you. Chris Giannski?
Mr. Baker, I got growling at you tonight, you and I have had it out a couple times. I've shot straight from the hip at you, you know that. I don't have an issue. It was just one of them things, that, the rumblings, but nobody really wanted to speak up. So, um, I would deal with it, I would, you know, you got it done without it, rather than playing with it. I think you're gonna run into issues, I mean, just personal experience. But, you know, if you can get the money back, you should be able to get the money back for, even after a year. I don't apologize, Mike, you know that, so, what I'm saying is, I growled, and you acknowledged I growled, and I pissed you off, but I got your attention, so. Um, the Tree Friends, I'm really, you know, excited about that, I called and checked. You guys got all your own money, you did all your own locating, you talked to all the people, you did what you needed to do. You're a fine example of a committee in the city of Buchanan, you really, really are, and thank you very much. Um, other than that, Dick Mann is gone, I wanted to acknowledge that loss, so, thank you very much.
Yeah, I wanted to, wanted to make sure that, uh, Dick was acknowledged. Uh, we had the funeral the other day, and representatives here, fifty-two years serving the city of Buchanan. Uh, you know, on the, uh, Reserve Police Department is quite an accomplishment, not many people get to do something like that. Uh, kudos to, uh, the Tree Friends, Rich Martin and the Tree Friends, I couldn't think of your name, Rich, I passed. And, well, you were, uh, from what I understand, you guys did a great job, uh, talking to the mayor, everything's those. Thank you very much for your hard work on Saturday, uh, along with, uh, Mr. Baker and his crew. And I know they try to work hard and do the, uh, do the right thing out there. Uh, thank you for the scarecrow ladies for being down here, uh, I know you guys some good things starting to go along, and if we can help you up on the hill, let us know, been in contact with a few of you, so, uh, yeah, that's a great thing. And you guys do a great service to the community with all of your donations to the different organizations and everything. Truly appreciate that. I wanna thank the staff, because we've been down here on different, a couple different occasions this past week, uh, at different budget meetings and everything, and, uh, uh, this group does an outstanding, outstanding job, uh, getting everything, getting the proper material to us. Uh, Mr. Lynch has been a godsend, uh, coming right here and stepping in and, and taking over uh, with the help of Kala and Courtney and Ashley, and all of the rest that serve in the various departments here. And like I always say, thanks to this commission for everything that they do, uh, they work hard, and, uh, well, they pissed somebody off, but I mean, that's, that's just our guy here. To use your phrase. So, anyway, thank you very much, guys, and Mr. Mayor, and that's all I have.
Thank you. I hate to keep saying the same things that everyone else says, but I do wanna offer my condolences to, uh, the family of Lloyd Miller. Um, Lloyd was instrumental in, uh, helping, uh, create the Michigan Gateway Community Foundation, and also, uh, offer my condolences to the family of Dick Mann. Um, he served fifty-four years on the Marion County Sheriff, which is unbelievable. Um, thanks to the Tree Friends, that was a great event this weekend, it was fun, I had a blast. Um, again, I would encourage everyone when they're doing it to go help. It's, it's not hard work. What is it about lots of hands make light work, or something, but it's, it's really not hard work, and it's just more fun than anything. I went to a, uh, play at the Tin Shop yesterday. I would encourage all of you to take advantage of the Tin Shop. It was a lot of fun. It was a good way to spend a cold afternoon. Um, and there's a lot of shows yet this year at the Tin Shop, and, uh, a great lineup at the Common this summer, too, so uh, be on the lookout and take advantage of, uh, what's being offered downtown. It's a lot of fun. Uh, the only other thing, uh, someone spoke to me about the parking on Claremont Street out by Stark School and the softball fields. Um, apparently, there's an issue with cars parking on both sides of the street during games. Um, and an ambulance was trying to get through this weekend and was having difficulty, so I don't know how we can maybe set up a meeting with Tim or with Mike, and we can figure out how to either add more no parking signs or, or make that a route during evenings when there's games, or...
Make that where there's parking only on one side.
Yeah.
When we have games, we've gotta have some type of parking down there, but I think it needs to be only on one side. Now, the signs that are down there are old and they say, "No parking," from like eight to four. We need to get those switched out. I'll work with Mike to make that happen. So we can have everybody parked on one side, and of course, if a fire truck, ambulance needs to get in there. We'll make that happen.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you. And that's all I have. I would take a motion to adjourn.
I would so move.
Thank you. Have a roll call, please.
Giannski? Moe?
Yes.
Swann?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.